I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of November 3rd, 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
Our first order of business is a retirement resolution, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for a resolution for Wendy Hansen. And whereas Wendy Hansen has been employed by and has faithfully served the city of Santa Maria since July 21st, 2008, and whereas Wendy Hansen has been committed to treating all persons with dignity and respect, and her service has been with distinction and of the highest quality, and whereas Wendy Hansen has provided the residents of the community with extraordinary professional law enforcement service and with great compassion, and whereas Wendy Hansen's involvement with the annual police officers memorial ceremony has enabled others to show gratitude and pay respect to the men and women in law enforcement who have lost their lives while performing their duties, and whereas Senior Dispatcher Wendy Hansen will retire from the city service on November the 4th, 2020. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California as follows: Senior Dispatcher Wendy Hansen is hereby commended for her faithful, distinguished, and devoted service to the community and is congratulated on her retirement, and the city wishes Wendy and her family continued good health and many years of happiness. And I would make that in the form of a motion, Mayor?
Thank you. Do I hear a second? I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution honoring Wendy Hansen for her years of service.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously Wendy can't be here tonight because of the COVID situation, but were she here, I would certainly be proud to give this to her. This is one of the last people that came on the department just before I left the agency in 2008.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to read this.
Any discussion?
No, but I want to point out, Madam Mayor, that Wendy has been with the city of Santa Maria for 12 years, but as a dispatcher, and 23 years with Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department, so 35 years she's given her life to this wonderful service. And it's just amazing how many people she's probably saved in those years.
Sure. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Do we have Chief Hansen on the line?
Let me just double check, I know he wanted to speak.
You know, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Chief Hansen, if you're on the line, would you mind raising your hand on the Zoom meeting, so I know it's you, I see a couple of phone numbers that I don't recognize?
While we're waiting for the chief to come on, Mayor, I know that during my time on the Police Department, all of everything that was said here is obviously very true, and then some, but it's a part of the chain and events that take place that is often forgotten, and something of substantial takes place in the city, a major shooting, anything like this, and it seems like everyone goes to the dispatcher for information, including those of us who were in supervisory positions wanting to know information. And the dispatcher seems to be one of the positions that is often left out of the chain of understanding and appreciation, and many times I would go in and update the dispatch on a major incident, and they were always so thankful and so appreciative to get information about what was going on, an officer that might have been hurt, or a bad accident, or something like that. And so it is, it can be kind of a forgotten position in the chain of events that take place during emergency services, and I'm certainly pleased that we have such a fine organization of dispatchers.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. I know often we forget, and to me, like, they're the unsung heroes, because there's so much in the background that they do, and to keep people calm, and to make sure that everything gets connected in the correct way and gets taken care of.
Nothing yet, so far.
We don't have them on?
No, not yet, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We want to thank Wendy for, very much for everything, and wish her the best, and perhaps Chief Hansel will be coming on soon? Okay.
Yeah, and if he does, we can certainly get him on.
The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening, unless otherwise directed by the mayor. Speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on the matters, not on printed, on the agenda this evening. And do I have any hands raised for comments on the public comment period?
None?
None at this moment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do, if you don't mind me interrupting, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Staff did receive one written comment from Susan and George Gonzalez in support of item 3F on the consent calendar relating to parking updates on Mariposa Way, and at this point, we still have no speakers for the comment.
So before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, do you wish to make any comments at this time? Well, let's move on then to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
The following routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider public input regarding the renewal of the Santa Maria Valley Tourism Marketing District formerly known as the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District as set forth in the Resolution of Intention adopted September 15th, 2020.
Mr. Morris of the Chamber of Commerce will be giving the report. Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We are here, as you said, for a, what should be the final public hearing related to the renewal of the Tourism Marketing District. The district has been in operation for the past nearly five years, during which we have coordinated and worked with our local hotels to market the community as a place or as a destination for tourism. This renewal will extend that program by an additional seven years. We will also be expanding the boundaries to include adjacent communities in the unincorporated county, as well as the city of Guadalupe, so that as properties, hotels are built and open in those communities, they'll be able to participate and help fund the marketing effort. I believe you have seen the petitions that have been submitted, well in excess of the required numbers, and we believe pending any comments or questions that you or the public may have, that we are ready to move forward.
Okay, are there any questions from the council? None? Oh, Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Morris, can you break it down for me and explain how we are equitably marketing our smaller motels?
Sure. So I think one of the things that's important to understand about the marketing district is that we are not marketing the hotels directly, right? They still have that requirement, that obligation to market their own property. The purpose of the district is to market the place, and to bring eyeballs to a central place where they begin to consider the community as a destination, and then have reason to consider the various hotels. We are working right now to try to identify some data sources that would, or mechanisms that would allow us to track the impact of our work by type or size of properties. Today, the data that we have is aggregated altogether, so I can tell you whether occupancy or daily rates are going up or down citywide, but I can't break it out, you know, based on the confidential combined data that we get. So again, our purpose is to get people thinking about the Santa Maria Valley, and excited about coming to the valley, and then to present equally all of the hotels as solutions to their lodging need. And if you look at our website, you'll see that all of the hotels are listed on everything we do. We never put out a marketing piece that is specific to one property or group of properties. We market everything at the same time.
Another question that I have is regarding the actual marketing piece. Can you explain to me just the process in which the board, or the governing body of this committee, this district, makes decisions on how?
Ms. Soto, you need to talk into your microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On what to market, or how to market? Like, are there brainstorming sessions, or is there a voting process?
Sure, so every year, we work with our vendor. We have an agency that we contract to manage that process for us, and they come in with a set of recommendations, they present those to, we call it the Advisory Committee, which is the decision-making body, and they have to approve that plan each year. And then on about a quarterly basis, we review how those things are going, and whether there's, you know, reason to make any adjustments throughout the year. All of those decisions go back to the Advisory Committee, which is a group of seven local hoteliers that are elected by their peers to be the decision-making group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, we received two written comments in favor of the item and encouraging the renewal of the Tourism District from Max Tucker, General Manager with Best Western Plus Big America, and JP Patel of Lotus Management, Inc., owner and representative of the Marriott Fairfield Inn, and Candlewood Suites. Staff has received no protest from the hoteliers, and there are no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any discussion and, sure, Ms. Waterfield?
Mr. Morris, have you determined or estimated what kind of revenues will be coming into the city through this Tourism Marketing District?
Well, that's a good question. We know what, so for the current fiscal year that we're working under right now, we forecast that the assessments that come in from the properties will be about a half a million. Last year, pre-COVID, it was about 650,000. So that's the budget we have to work with. I don't know that we've drawn a straight line that would translate that into TOT collection. We could probably work on figuring out what that relationship is based on historical data.
And if we didn't have the TMD, we wouldn't have much to look forward to.
Right. So, you know, as you and the other members of the council are well aware, the, you know, the city does help fund the Visitors Bureau activity here, and that has always provided a base that we can work with, but much of the funds that we use through the Visitors Bureau are really designed, are really deployed to enhance the visitor experience once they come here, and/or to work with local organizations to help them create the events and the things that bring people here, or that they do while they're here. What we've lacked, and the reason we've started this program five years ago, was that dedicated, consistent funding stream that allowed us to go outside of our region and really market the place to people that, you know, are far enough away that they're going to need to stay the night once they come.
Well, absolutely, because if you look around the valley, Santa Maria is the only city that has the larger motels and the nicer motels, as opposed of going, you know, further up north.
That's right. And our marketing strategy really builds on that. We call it the home base strategy, and it's really built on staying in Santa Maria, and we talk about a 30-minute radius around us, and all of the, you know, options and programs that exist for people to vacation there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let me add, this has nothing to do with what we're going to vote on, but are we seeing, I know we're seeing a reduction, but is there a limit as to how many people can be in the motels or the hotels?
So I don't believe that there's any restrictions at this point on occupancy in the guest rooms, other than the, you know, fire code, you know, the basic kind of restrictions. And I don't believe there's any COVID-related restrictions on the number of guest rooms they can rent or fill. There are restrictions on, as in every other business, public areas, meeting room space, things like that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that the City Council hold a final public hearing and adopt a resolution declaring the results of a majority protest proceeding in renewing the Santa Maria Valley Tourism Marketing District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Do we have, please, our police chief? Okay. Next, we have another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct the public hearing and consider adopting a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of Community Health Centers of the Central Coast, Inc., under the requirements of the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986.
And the staff report is to be made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and the public. We are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax, Equity, and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFFRA. TEFFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. The California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. Community Health Centers of the Central Coast Incorporated proposes to issue tax-exempt bonds in the amount not to exceed $30 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used for refinancing loans from Pacific Premier Bank that were used for acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, and equipping of health facilities throughout the city and San Luis Obispo County. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the Community Health Centers of the Central Coast Incorporated, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities regarding the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the Community Health Centers of the Central Coast Incorporated. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFFRA, the Code, and CMFA's joint power agreement. CMFA Representative Anthony Stubbs and Liu Tao from Central Coast Health Centers is on the phone if you have questions, and they may be able to answer for you.
Thank you. Questions?
No, but I do have a comment, just for the audience out there, and the reason why the city is involved in this, it's because the city of Santa Maria must conduct a public hearing, provide for the members of the community an opportunity to speak in favor or against the use of taxed-exempt bonds for the refinancing of certain obligations of the borrower. So that's the only part we play in this whole entire $30 million scene, so just don't want to scare anybody out there.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The young person that's on the phone is, who?
There's a representative from the CMFA, and then also Liu Tao, I believe is how you pronounce it, forgive me if I mispronounce that, from Central.
Okay. I tried to do some figures on this, and I certainly appreciate the fact that the city isn't on the line for this, but there's a $30 million loan presented, and as I went through the figures here, I come up with about 2.2 million, and so that leaves like 20.8 million that didn't really get accounted for in this memo. Can you just, I know there's a reason, and I know that there's a sensible answer, but can you just say so on the record what it is, please?
Yes.
There's someone on the phone, you want them to answer it? Mary?
They can answer it. I can answer it, I believe, actually, because I asked the same question, because I added those numbers up as well. And the answer is that the other amount, 24 million-ish, is for bonds or for services in San Luis Obispo County. So the county of San Luis Obispo will also be doing a public hearing for that portion of the bonds. So the portion that we have the numbers on in here are for the community centers that are in the city of Santa Maria.
Okay, so this will only be partly done here, they'll finish it up north?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Moats, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no written communications, and at this time, we have no hands raised or requests to speak.
Okay, then I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to go ahead and recommend that we conduct a public hearing under the requirements of the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFFRA, and the Internal Revenue Code, 1986, as amended, and to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the sole purpose of refinancing certain obligations of Community Health Centers of the Central Coast, Inc., and satisfying the requirements of certain other matters relating thereto.
Second.
Okay, it's moved to the second, I don't have to reread the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the City Council will consider the implementation of Senate Bill 743 in the city of Santa Maria.
And the staff report will be made by Director of Community Development? Nope. And Principal Planner, Ms. Edie? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So Senate Bill 743 was signed into state law in 2013, and this bill requires a change in the way that cities measure environmental impacts for traffic. Previously, traffic impacts from projects were measured by how they affected the level of service of signalized intersections and roadway segments. Projects that resulted in traffic that reduced the level of service of intersections below city thresholds and caused operational delays were found to result in significant impacts. SB 743 requires that effective January 1st of this year, that projects are required to analyze vehicle miles traveled, also known as VMT. VMT is the amount and distance of automobile travel that is attributable to a project, and it requires projects to quantify the number of miles driven for that particular use or project to operate. The change from level of service to VMT requires the city to revise its process, to adopt appropriate VMT baselines and thresholds, as well as feasible mitigation measures to address traffic impacts, and also to revise and update the city's environmental procedures to include this new information. The Planning Commission reviewed the recommended changes on August 5th, and they have unanimously recommended the changes that are being presented this evening to your council. Calculating VMT requires measuring the full round-trip length of a vehicle trip. So in this example, you can see the project starts at the home, and then it's one entire full-length trip, and so in this case, the total VMT is 28 miles. And any mitigation that is needed would be focused on the land use and any programs that can reduce VMT. So there are a number of project types that would be screened out from requiring VMT analysis, and the types of projects that would be screened out are listed here in this slide, and they include local-serving retail projects that are less than 50,000 square feet, some affordable housing projects, if 20% are for low or very low-income residents, smaller projects that have less than 110 daily trips, and infrastructure projects that include roadway improvements and bike paths and traffic signal installation. Those would all be screened out from requiring any VMT analysis. Also, and I'm going to go over these in the next couple of slides, there are some areas that are located on our recommended county-wide baseline maps that would also be screened out from requiring any VMT analysis. So this is the recommended baseline map for non-residential land uses. The baseline average is right around 11 miles, and what you should note about this map is that all of the areas that are shown in green here have been presumed to be areas that would have a less-than-significant impact to traffic, and so a VMT analysis would not be required for any projects that are located in the areas in green. The other areas that are in red and orange and yellow, if projects in those areas would require a VMT analysis if they were not able to be screened out, if they weren't the type of project that could be screened out that I showed in the other slide. And so similar to that previous slide, this is the recommended baseline map for residential uses. The baseline average is right around 7 miles, and it's the same situation with this map, where anything in green, our projects in those locations would be screened out from requiring a VMT analysis, and it would be required in any other areas. So the, oh, excuse me, the threshold is, what's it doing? The threshold is what projects will need to achieve to avoid a sequent impact, and the threshold that is required is 15% below the existing baseline. So in this case, for residential uses, the threshold would be 6.17 miles per person, and then for office and service and manufacturing uses, it would be right around 9 miles per employee. And then for other retail and infrastructure uses, it would be the net VMT impact, so it's the impact from the project versus not having the project. And if a project cannot be screened out from a VMT analysis, and it's identified to have a significant impact, mitigation measures to reduce the impacts would need to be identified. And some of those mitigations could include project revisions, alternative transportation opportunities such as bicycle and transit network improvements, or employer-based transportation demand management, such as a ride-share program, would assist in that. So as I mentioned previously, updates to the environmental procedures and guidelines are needed. The city's current environmental procedures are out of date and need to be updated, so as part of that, we would include the VMT baseline maps and thresholds and the screening criteria that we're presenting today, as well as updating definitions and noticing procedures to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, and then general revisions throughout the document to address the city's current municipal code to address the city's current municipal code requirements and environmental review process. So the recommendation this evening is that the City Council adopt a resolution implementing SB 743 to set the vehicle miles traveled baseline and thresholds of significance, and also update the city's environmental procedures and guidelines. We do have Mr. Jim Damkowicz on the line through Zoom, and he's with DKS Consulting. And he assisted the city with doing the modeling and updating, with updating the maps and things like that. So he's available for questions. Thank you.
Any questions of the council? Ms. Waterfield?
I'm curious, what is the penalty to the city and those that want to come in and develop and build if we don't pass this? Can somebody answer that question for me?
Councilmember Waterfield, I think one thing that will assist the city in adopting this is that it does provide developers with a list of projects, types that could be screened out. And the maps also provide that. And if the city doesn't have that, then pretty much every project will need to do a VMT analysis, every discretionary-level project as part of a traffic study.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just want the public to understand this because it's almost as though they're forcing us to live within a certain area and limit, and the only way we can go is up. And it's nobody's business, you know, where I travel to every single day. And say you built this Enos Ranchos and that was required, so you're going to do, how many miles traveled to get to those locations? I'm just so against this because it's just government intrusion. You know, more government intrusion in our lives. And I just think it's just BS.
Like, we hear so many people talk about sequel reform, and this is going in the opposite direction. So I've, and we have no recourse. And I think people in the public need to know about that, that we have no recourse. The state comes down and tells us how to build, where to build, and when to build. Any questions from the council?
Just to be clear on one item. You asked what the penalty would be. For the developer would be the potential for sequel litigation related to not following the rules, which substantially increases cost of development.
Well, absolutely.
It's a state law that locals have no jurisdiction over. What we can do is set the standard to make it more palatable to our local community. And that's what we're trying to do tonight.
Yeah, and that still sucks, you know, because it's just that intrusion.
Well, we have a development that'll be going through that does not have to go to the Planning Commission, does not have to be approved by the City Council, and it's going to be extremely dense. And it has no public input. The public doesn't even get to say anything about it. And I just think that's really overstepping on the state's part to tell communities, you know, what to build and how to build.
And please don't get me wrong, this isn't anything towards you. You're just the messenger. You just happen to be here.
We understand you're the messenger.
We understand what you have to go through.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
We have no written correspondence on this item or requests to speak. However, we do have Mr. Damkowicz on the line from the consult.
So would we like to hear from Mr. Damkowicz? Yes. Yes.
I'm here to assist, to respond to questions. And I feel that they've done that well. So I have nothing more to add unless there's additional questions.
Thank you, there aren't any additional questions. Okay, I'll bring this item back to the council for any discussion and a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution implementing SB 743 to set the city's vehicle miles traveled VMT baseline and thresholds of significance and updating the city's environmental procedures and guidelines.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, and I won't bother reading the whole motion. And any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Councilmember Moat?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Pacino?
No. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the first quarter financial report ending September 30th, 2020.
Hang on one minute. We have Chief Hanson on the line, don't we? Let's, yes, I'm sorry.
Chief Hanson, are you available? Unmute your microphone, please. He's there.
He is there, so we'll talk to Chief Hanson or have him talk to us. Has he figured out which button to push?
I don't think so, yeah.
I kind of like it when other people are in trouble with their computer.
He's still muted. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Hello.
Good evening, Chief Hanson.
There you go. Mike, it's all yours.
I am so, I am so sorry. I apologize, and I didn't see that you were kind of unmuted there. I'm sorry, dispatchers. I apologize for not being there earlier.
Well, I think we want to hear from you now.
Oh, absolutely. Is that why you unmuted me, ma'am?
That is why we unmuted you.
We didn't know we could.
Well, first of all, I apologize profusely. My wife didn't know I was going to be doing this tonight. I've been off, as you may know, for a couple of weeks. I had a knee replacement surgery last 10 days ago. And I took some pain meds and slept through the first part of the meeting. I'm sorry. It was Wendy Hanson got her retirement tonight. And I just wanted to call in and say what a wonderful job that she's done for us and how proud I am of the service that she provided to the city. The dispatchers on our department are incredible, as you know. And they dispatch for both the fire and police department. And they take those initial calls when they come and people are in panic. People are beside themselves and they make something of it. They get intelligible information. They get us what we need to know to get there and start to solve the problem. And they actually start to solve the problems on the phone and get things sorted out. And then they're our lifeline once we get there. And I actually listened, I wrote a note to all our dispatchers a couple of weeks back. You may remember a couple of L.A. sheriff deputies were ambushed down in Compton. And I listened to the dispatch tapes on that. And it made me, it was so emotional to listen to that. And it was such an unbelievable example of how they're your lifeline because they made sense of that gargling transmission from that poor female deputy that was wounded in the face and could hardly speak. And they made sense of it and coordinated the whole response. And we just can't do without them. And Wendy was a standout amongst standouts. She was a lead, as you know, one of our supervisors, frontline supervisors, and just did a marvelous job for us. So congratulations to Wendy. Can't thank her enough for her calm and professionalism throughout her many years of service with the department. And thank you, ma'am, for the opportunity to come on more here late in the game and say something.
Well, thank you very much for waking up and joining us. We appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. Our next regular business item, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the first quarter financial report ending September 30th, 2020, and amendments to the 2020-2021 budget for personnel and operational changes.
So the staff report will be made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the first quarter ended September 30, 2020. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and enterprise funds. The beginning fund, general fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unaudited balance at July 1, 2020. Concerning city revenues through the first quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are just over $543,000 or 9% greater than the first quarter last fiscal year. The increase is primarily due to growth in allocations from the county and state pools as a result of the 2018 Supreme Court wafer decision. That decision allows states to require out-of-state retailers to collect and remit sales tax for goods sold online to customers within the state. Sales growth in building and construction and business and industry categories also contributed to the higher revenue, but were offset by declines in the fuel and service stations, general consumer goods, and restaurant and hotel categories. Through September, TOT receipts are approximately $248,000 less than last fiscal year and falling short of estimates by about $267,000 or 9%. Normally, the summer months produce a large portion of TOT annual revenues, but due to COVID-19, staff anticipates the majority of TOT to be received in the second half of the fiscal year. NHIS revenues is at just over 80% of budget at $161,000, with an annual budget of $200,000. This compares to receipts through the first quarter of last year of $595,000 or a decrease of approximately $434,000. The majority of NHIS material received during the first quarter of 2021 came from Chevron's San Luis Obispo tank farm project, Chevron's Coranza lease, and Shell Oil's Cat Canyon lease. The city expects to continue receiving material from some small-scale projects, but a decline in material is anticipated during the winter rainy months. The ongoing effects of the coronavirus on local economy make it very hard to predict NHI activities levels. And as a result, revenues are uncertain for the second half of 2021. Permit revenue is at 30% of budget, or approximately $625,000, and is 19.3% greater than the first quarter of last fiscal year. The city has seen an increase in the number of permits for accessory dwelling units in the first quarter. And there are three commercial projects, the Vida Dialysis Clinic, Clean and Dash, and the Dutch Brothers Coffee that are currently in the permitting process. Turning to general fund expenditures, they are at 22.5% of budget and include $628,000 in salary savings. And staff expects to achieve additional salary savings in the second quarter. Although we anticipate some salary savings as a way to balance the budget, these budget savings, combined with the latest revenue estimates, are expected to reduce the amount of leaf transfer from $4.4 million to approximately $1 million by fiscal year end. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the first quarter are ahead of budget at 31.3%, or $5.4 million. Expenditures are at 21.1% of budget, or approximately $738,000 under budget. Most of the budget underend is due to vacancies in the police department. The library and recreation and parks departments are also under budget because of operational restrictions under health orders to address COVID-19. The Measure U budget allocations remain 90% for public safety, 5% for youth services, and 5% for quality of life. But due to the COVID shutdowns through September, 92% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 3% on youth services, and 5% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenues exceeded expenditures by $723,000, which is about $717,000 more than last year. This variance is due to the implementation of new water and sewer rates effective January of 2020. And there is a decrease in state water payments of about $330,000. Expenditures included in the semi-annual debt service payment of $746,000 of interest on the 2012 refunding bonds. The remaining principal and interest payment of $3.9 million will occur in the third quarter of the fiscal year. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by about $261,000. Operational expenses are about 7.1%, or $368,000 greater than the previous year. But revenues are up 11.1%, or $621,000. The transit fund's first quarter revenues are more than expenditures by $1.8 million, primarily due to receipt of grant revenues for future operations and capital projects. Fair revenue is down 94%, or $175,000, due to the city waiving transit fees to assist customers during the COVID-19 pandemic. The city waived just over $115,000 of fares from July through September. The fare box ratio through the first quarter is only 3.5%. And it would have been 28.1% had the fares not been waived. In conjunction with the first quarter financial report, staff is recommending eight of nine budget amendments presented for council's consideration. That concludes my report, and I'm here to answer questions. Council has any?
Any questions of Ms. Harvey?
I have one question. What is the decrease in the Santa Maria water payments of about $330,000?
It's just that last year, we had a big increase in payments. And this year, there's a little bit less. I'm not sure specifically if it was the DWR or the variable rate that went down. I would have to go back and look at those specifically because we combined those. But it just is a little bit less this year.
Are people during this COVID period using more water than prior? Are we seeing that our users are using more water? Or is it just the same?
Well, the state water payments are not tied to consumption.
This is a completely different question.
We aren't seeing an increase in consumption. It's been about steady. But we are having an additional amount of revenues because we have more, because the rates went up. So that would be, but it's been fairly consistent.
Any questions, Ms. Harvey?
You know, I have a question. And I don't know if it's for Ms. Harvey or if it's for Mr. Springer. But looking at, I'm trying to find here where we're talking about disposal rates. Because we just, back in September, we didn't increase in our disposal rates. And then we left, well, we did a tier in regards to them. And tonight, we did a tier disposal rate for the franchise haulers. But are we, are we in a good place with? I want the audience to understand why the increase needed to occur. Because looking at this, it almost looks like you're in, you know, you're really good in the black. And they need to understand what it takes to maintain.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the quarterly report is a snapshot in time. And part of what's important to recognize is that while revenues are in excess of expenditures for this quarter, we are accumulating money toward expenses that we will see in the future. A major one of those, as we know, is the Los Flores Ranch property, where a future landfill will have capacity for this community for the next 75 to 100 years. So as we look out over the timeline or the horizon when we set rates, we generally look at at least a 10-year horizon. We do this for water and sewer, and we also do it on the solid waste side. So when there's a snapshot in time, for example, both of the enterprise funds related to the utilities department, revenues exceeded expenditures. That's great news because we're not reducing fund balance. But there are significant expenditures that will come up throughout the year. An example of that is during the second quarter of this year, we will have another major payment that we pay for state water, as well as bond payments that we make for the state water as well. So on that side, it's important that our revenues exceed expenditures during certain quarters because there's times when the payments come due that we need to kind of have that money in our checking account, so to speak. that we need to kind of have that money in our checking account, so to speak. Specifically on the solid waste side, as you were talking about, there are, we are setting rates because we have expenditures that are coming. Some of these are items that we talked about when we set the rate structure back in September. The state of California continues to enact legislation that requires more and more diversion from the landfill. Every time that happens, that is an additional expense on the ratepayers in Santa Maria. There's no effective way for us to avoid that or any other jurisdiction in California. I've talked with the city council over the last several years regarding the change in recycling and what has happened with the ability of China to, or the willingness of China to receive some of these recyclables. So the recycling market worldwide has gone very poorly. So the costs to recycle have gone up. And unfortunately, the way that's set up is that that is borne by the ratepayers. So that is an additional expense. And moving forward, what we're seeing in California is the requirement for diversion of organics. So while in Santa Maria, for quite some time, we've had a program for recycling green waste. We divert the green waste away from the landfill, and that goes to a local composting facility. Likewise, the Blue Bands is a single-stream recycling that we do as well. But the state of California has enacted legislation that's going, that currently requires organics diversion for larger customers, and it will work its way all the way down to each and every one of us at a residential level. And when I talk about organics, primarily what we're talking about there is food waste. So the kitchen table scraps from your kitchen, the potato peelings, all those sort of things that now might go into your garbage can or wherever the case is. The state of California is mandating that we provide diversion programs for that. We have been working on that over the last couple of years. As those have been implemented, we've implemented them. And there are some great commercial businesses that we deal with here, butcher sharps and connoisseurias that provide that service now. And we have about one route that we go out and collect this material. As you can imagine, a dumpster full of butcher scraps is gross. Gross, okay. Highly technical term, correct. So it is something that we're working on, but as those regulations kick in, we're recognizing that we will have to hire another driver, purchase another collections truck, set up another route, and that's just an additional expense. So part of, part of what we're doing is doing the best we can so that we can provide that consistent rate structure for the ratepayers in Santa Maria and get an idea of what our expenses are moving forward, so.
And then you're going to have to figure out how to mitigate these maggots that are going to start developing. I mean, this is, I get it, but I'm so glad you went into detail about this because I think the public needs to understand what's happening with our solid waste business that we have out here. And it's just not a clean business, so.
Thank you. I apologize for the very long, very long answer on.
That was excellent. Thank you.
On election night. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of people don't realize what's happening with recycling.
They don't.
You know, and I know up in Napa County, they had a voluntary on the food waste, and that is a mess. It is a mess. Yeah, it's gross to look at, and it's gross to smell. But a lot of people don't realize what's gone on with our recycling, just for plastics and papers and things like that that we were having to do.
And all the new mandates coming down either, so we're not being mean.
But thank, thank you very much, Mr. Springer, for that explanation. Any questions?
I do, but it's for Ms. Harvey.
Yes.
This question is regarding the, the under budget of, by, of 4.2% from fire, from the fire department. Can you go into detail on that? I know that you went into detail on police, but I'm curious on fire.
Fire is, let me just look at the.
So they're over budget because of overtime, but that's being reimbursed, correct?
That is correct. So we look at the budget based on expenditures to the budget, excuse me. And so in mutual aid for fighting wild wildfires, we had a budget of about $500,000, and they have extended, they have expended all of that plus. And so it's about $655,000 that they've expended in the first quarter. Yes, that is going to be reimbursable at some point. But at, so if we didn't have all of that, that excess, then they would be under budget. So that's what I was trying to normalize that, because that's sort of an unusual one that we, I mean, we have that every year, but it's been, as we all know, in a very unusually high fire season. And so there's been an exorbitant amount of overtime on that. So we will be receiving additional revenues that we didn't, because we had also estimated the revenues to be $500,000 and the expenditures to be $500,000. Does that answer your question?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Stillwell.
If I could expand a bit too on that, but more broadly regarding the general fund and Measure U, it's a similar story that Mr. Director Springer just mentioned. So we are looking at a snapshot in time. I think he said it's great news. You know, we see that there's a hopeful trend. But you know, our broader challenge we have is expenditures continue to outpace revenues as we look forward. And so that's going to need to be what we continue to all work together on to develop plans for our future. The goal is to be able to close that estimated budget deficit going forward. And as the council knows, we did two things to close our gap with the budget. One was use reserves, and another was reduce services and the costs, the expenditures related to that. And then the COVID impacts negatively impacted our revenue on top of that, and it's been significant, and it's real variable. We're, we don't have good estimates from our consultants or our neighboring cities whether the revenue trends are going to be positive going forward or not. So we're cautiously, I wouldn't even say optimistic at this point, but hopeful. So the, the next five year, as I mentioned, five-year projections aren't going to keep up. The revenue won't keep up with our expenditures, and so we now need to plan to be able to address those challenges. The more we plan at this point, the less drastic the impacts will be later. So that's the similar story with what Mr. Springer said, but that's for the general fund and Measure U.
Are we going to be able to add anything into our savings?
That's a good question. At this point, we're still in, doing our final year-end items. We have actually auditors here this week with that. We are looking at this point like there will be some savings, but I'm not sure exactly how much those are until we're really 100% done. In this current fiscal year, 2021, it's not showing that we will have savings. But again, it's only the first quarter, so we have a lot to go. And really, one of the concerns that I have and I've been reading about is the possibility of a delay in what those revenue streams were going to be. When we got the estimates for, from our consultant, the thought was that it was going to take a dive quickly. We're anticipating maybe it's not quickly, it's, so we haven't hit the bottom, it's just kind of.
More gradually.
Yeah, so it's going to be gradual, maybe long out further. Will it hit as far down as what they expected? We don't know. But, so that's one of the reasons that we're being very cautious about what our estimates are and making changes at this point, because it's still a little bit, it's early on. And we'll, we will continue to keep an eye on that and then assessing that and assessing the impacts of future expenditures, in particular PERS, because we all know that those are going up. And we just found out, what, about, maybe a month ago, that it was going to be going up upwards of 30% in the next five years. So that's another forecast that we'll need to do and anticipate and try to work into our plan on how we're going to deal with those.
Yeah, because the savings has always helped to bail us out quite a bit, so. It's always kind of nice to have that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Do we have any, any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, there is no one to speak at this time.
Okay.
Or requests.
Oh, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mary, do you know of any innovative thinking with regard to cities in general, not only us, but other cities, to make those PERS payments? Is there any innovative financing going on, like extensions or things like that that might help to lower that? Or is it, hey, these are the costs, this is what it's going to be, and you're going to pay it? Pretty much the latter?
Unfortunately, PERS doesn't have, I mean, they're the ones that tell us how much it's going to cost. How we pay for it is up to us. But there's, as far as innovative ways, I, there's a variety of options that have, I've seen people, different cities do. But primarily, they are really taking, setting aside funds and either using them right away to make payments to CalPERS or put it into a trust to hold for stabilizing. So when it goes up really high and we, maybe our revenues go down, we can use those to offset that increase. There's different things like that, but the amount we have to owe, that's just a matter of what CalPERS tells us and how we can, and the benefits that we're going to provide. So the amount is much more difficult, I would say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's any creative way to, maybe we could find it, an oil, some oil here in Santa Maria and sell it to the Saudis, but. Anyway, any other questions, Ms. Harvey? That's, that's creative, right? Okay, and I asked you if we had any requests to speak or written correspondence. I'll bring this back to the council for any discussion and/or a motion.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that the city council receive and file the financial report for the first quarter ending September 30, 2020. And approve the.
That's right, there's changes to the financial.
Adopt a resolution approving amendments to the 2021 budget for personnel and operational changes for the first quarter ending September 30, 2020.
Hold on a second.
I have a motion and a second, and I won't read it. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Pino?
Aye.
The next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Three items of note have tonight. For the next meeting on November 17, one regular business item will be subdivision and lieu quimby fees. That's an item that came to the council before, and council asked us to do additional work. And so we're able to come back with an updated recommendation for updating our quimby fees. Also, when the COVID crisis first hit, we took some of our employees who were displaced due to facility closures and other mitigation measures and created a grants team. And they've been out working to find grants that can help us sustain our operations or be able to offset other costs that we would incur providing services. And for the next meeting, we have three grants proposed on the agenda, a local road safety plan grant, a highway safety improvement grant, and the Prop 68 per capita grant for the Enos Ranch House. And then one item for direction at this point is we have a request to change the tax rebate agreement for Honda and Toyota to extend the timeframe. At this time, staff doesn't recommend doing that with a lot of the information we heard here tonight. But we are looking for direction, if you'd like us, to spend staff time to develop a revised agreement and bring it back to a future council meeting.
Thank you. Now we will have reports from council members. Dr. Moats, we could start with you.
Madam Mayor, I have no report.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Soto?
I don't believe I have any reports.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did the Ben Hayes Show last, a couple of weeks ago. And then I want to say that I worked together with the Parks and Rec and the Elks 1538 for the, I think they called it trunk-or-treat that they did out at Presker Park last Thursday for the children. It was a very successful event. It was so successful that we got a visit from the California Highway Patrol asking us to stop because of the success in that traffic was backing up clear onto the freeway from Presker Park. But it was, it was a great event. The Parks and Rec did a great job of promoting it. There was just a bunch of cars, and it was an opportunity for those of us that were out there to see a smile on these little kids' faces, and they were in their cars with their costumes and things like that. It was just, it was a great event to be involved with. And I got a shout out to a young lady by the name of Jamie Scherer with the Elks. She was just a true champion out there, helping to put things together and made our booth look just as great as any other booth that was out there on display. And it was a fun event. And that's all I have.
Thank you. October 21, I did a webinar on suicide prevention during the holiday seasons. On October 22, I spoke to the Thursday Breakfast Rotary early in the morning. I think it was 7:00 or 7:30. Did the From Burnout to Resilience on the Mental Health Awareness, Mental Health Wellness webinar. And October 24, I did Serve Santa Maria at Taylor. I went to Taylor Elementary School after I had worked over at the Four Square Church for a while. And at Taylor Elementary School, they finished painting the map of the, of the United States there. And it was very colorful and painted also around the, around different areas on the playground. On October 26, did a webinar on trauma-informed response to protests put on by the League of Cities. October 27, did another meeting with SB CAG on arena numbers and what's expected of us. And also talking to Mr. Ng about the housing units that are expected to be in Santa Maria. October 28, did the State of the City with City Manager Jason Stillwell. And it's really different to give a presentation, a speech, and be looking at your laptop the whole time and not know who's there. And, but it was fine, the State of the City was fine. Did the Marion Foundation Board Director, Board of Directors meeting on Zoom. And then that afternoon, did the call with the State Attorney General on the opioid crisis. October 29, I attended the Domestic Violence Solution Awareness Month meetings by Zoom and didn't make it to the Presker Park thing. October 30, did the Rick Blaymire Show in the morning. And then that evening, I headed out to do the trunk-or-treat at the police department. And I called to let them know I'd be there in about 15 minutes. And from that point to where I, almost to the police department was two hours, and I never made it to the police department. They had traffic down Blosser and down Bedaravia. And I understand that we, that the police officers gave out candy to 3,060 kids. And they were supposed to go from 5:30 to 7:30. And they start, actually started at 3:30, and they went to 8:45. And they didn't turn any kids away.
You know, if you could give us a helicopter, they could pick you up and drop you.
I requested a helicopter of our city manager, and he did not respond. You're ignoring me again.
Do you recall that the Santa Maria Police Department did have a helicopter at one time?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Yes. So next year, I'm going to have to have a different plan. I could have been in Ventura by that time, right? So October 31, did the teleconference remote work on, I don't even talk about that. November 3, this morning, I spoke to the Association of Realtors this morning, did the Ben Hayes Show, and attended Rotary. And here we are tonight at our city council meeting. Any other comments from the dais? If not, we are going to adjourn this meeting. And if you haven't voted out there, get out and vote. You still have time. And God bless America, land that we love. Good night, everyone.